Whenever you are ready, Vice Mayor.
Right. Welcome back, everybody. Let's let everybody know that today I did get my second shot of the vaccine and thanks. I definitely encourage everybody to get the vaccine. Yeah, so if I'm a little bit off, please forgive me, but I think I'll be okay. So next we have a proclamation recognizing May 2021 as National Historic Preservation Month, read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
So National Historic Preservation Month, whereas National Historic Preservation Month is sponsored by National Trust for Historic Preservation and is celebrated by the City's Historic Landmarks Committee and the Historical Sites Society of Arcata. And whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas the Historic Landmarks Committee will celebrate Preservation Month by focusing on the National Trust theme of This Place Matters, featuring places, infrastructure and buildings, as well as natural landscapes around Humboldt Bay with a particular emphasis on the plaza. And whereas the Historical Sites Society of Arcata preserves the Phillips House Museum and maintains a website featuring walking tours, preservation articles and archives, which is used by the local schools to discuss the evolution of a community. And whereas the City of Arcata's Historic Landmarks Committee continues to work on fostering education and incentivizing strategies, including its Mills Act program, to help property owners rehabilitate and maintain their historic properties, and acknowledges the Chapman House for its significant rehabilitation, leading to its placement on the National Register of Historic Places and usage of the Arcata Mills Act program in 2020. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes May 2021 as National Historic Preservation Month and calls upon the people of Arcata to recognize and observe Historic National Historic Preservation Month by walking the Arcata Plaza and Arcata's historic neighborhoods and accessing historical site information by using city-generated QR codes posted at local businesses, visiting the Historic Sites Society of Arcata website, following @ArcataHistory on Instagram, or following the Historical Sites Society of Arcata Facebook page featuring then and now.
Thank you. Right. We do not have a report by Commissioner Committee this evening. Next, we have early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda referred staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes. We can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment.
We do have public comments.
Great.
First speaker, Pat. Can you go ahead, please? You'll have two minutes.
Yeah, my name is Pat Carr, and my comment touches on the climate action plan, but it's not specifically about that, which I know is on your agenda for tonight. I wanted to say that a couple of weeks ago, as you may have read, the North Coast Journal ran an article entitled "Arcata Under Pressure." You reported on a projection from the Union of Concerned Scientists that within a decade or so, up to 41 Arcata residents may lose their housing from sea level rise. In addition to that human toll, the city could also lose up to $2.7 million in tax property value vanishing underwater. So it's very timely that tonight we have that presentation scheduled on the county's climate action plan. Obviously, we're just one of countless communities, and your decisions can in no way alone stop climate change. But Arcata has historically been a leader in environmental action, and this is a time when you can act to continue that leadership. You can do that by supporting a strong climate action plan and acting in accordance with it. You can also do that by enacting a ban on natural gas in new construction, as has been discussed by this and the prior council for well over a year. This would add Arcata to a list of dozens of other California towns and cities that have enacted similar bans. It will make it vastly easier to eliminate emissions from buildings than relying on retrofits at some future time, and it will take a big burden from the shoulders of future Arcata residents. I believe that each of you, city council members, have vowed to support climate action in your roles on the city council. Now that we are seeing a resurgence of federal leadership to tackle the climate emergency we face, and on a night when we have a presentation from the county's plan for that, it's time for the city council to take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca. Go ahead, please, Rebecca.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. This is Rebecca Crowe. I am a resident in the city of Arcata. I wanted to first thank Councilmember Atkins Salazar for speaking at the Humboldt County Planning Commission meeting on April 22nd. I was actually very disappointed in the lack of respect that our elected council member was shown and just really appreciate the city coming forward. I would ask that the minutes be pulled from the consent agenda and that both the draft letter that the city reviewed during the council meeting on the 21st and the final letter that was sent to the Planning Commission on the 22nd be added to the minutes. That would be helpful for the public to just understand and be able to see those two drafts. In addition, it's my understanding that Chris Gomez has submitted some additional comments that he would like the council to consider. I also wanted to update the city council that the neighbors have appealed the Board of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the conditional use permit for the Arcata Land Company project. And we are, so we are pursuing an appeal with the Board of Supervisors and, you know, would hope that we could have continued support from the city of Arcata, that that project really requires additional scientific study to be able to understand the full impacts. Similar to the previous comment that was made, nothing in climate change is considered in that document and, you know, could have significant impact. So again, thank the city and look forward to more information on this project moving forward.
Thank you.
You, Rebecca.
Next, we have Judy. Judy?
Yes, is that Jude?
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So I'm here. I'm a citizen of Arcata in Bayside, but I'm in Arcata. And but I'm here representing Redwood Region Audubon this evening, and I want the city council simply to be aware that for nine months, Redwood Region Audubon has been contacting the city, the previous Environmental Services Director and his deputy, Ms. Neander, regarding the problem of cats at the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. There are about six cats that are there constantly, and I don't know if you know this, but in the municipal code of the city of Arcata, you have a section on the release of animals in the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. And you find that their presence is not good for the Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. It's unlawful to release or cause the release of animals in the marsh or in proximity to the marsh. And in this ordinance, it says a director of environmental services or their designee is authorized to impound and remove all non-native animals from Arcata Marsh and take them to the shelter. So we have been quite frustrated at the lack of any progress on the city enforcing this ordinance. The city sent a letter last December to all the people and businesses in the vicinity of the marsh, telling them about the ordinance, telling them they don't want cats there, killing birds. They want to protect wildlife at the marsh specifically from cats, and that if their animals are seen there, they're subject to removal. Nothing has happened since then. Also, a citizen called the Arcata Police about a cat constantly roaming the marsh recently. The police came, told the owner not to do it, and nothing changed. So I just want you to be aware of this ordinance of yours. It's not being enforced, and we will
Sorry.
with the city.
Cool. Thank you, Jude. Appreciate it.
Bye.
Okay, checking if there are any more public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no more early communications, Vice Mayor.
Right. Next, we have our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items. Discussion is required. That item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. The end of reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for a separate discussion. A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of April 21st, 2021. B, biweekly report on general warrants. C, declare continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. D, adopt ordinance number 1545 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending Article 3 in Chapter 2, Title 6 of the Arcata Municipal Code to regulate short stay and vacation rentals. Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. E, award a construction contract for the 30th Street Commons Improvement Plan, 30th Street Project. F, Loduke Co. in the amount of $995,785 authorized the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $149,367.75, 15% for a total of $1,145,152.75 to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. F, approve the procurement process and award a purchase contract for the ultraviolet disinfection equipment system at the Wastewalk Treatment Plant to Trojan Technologies Group, ULC, in the amount of $1,338,400. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to 5%, $66,920 for contingencies, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Adopt Resolution Number, I'm sorry, G, adopt Resolution Number 201-52 to approve participation in the Employment Risk Management Authority, ERMA, Joint Powers Authority, for employment practices liability coverage. H, approve amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with JJACPA Inc., extending the term of the agreement to include audit services for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2020 and 2021. I, approve a letter of support for Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District's grant application to CAL FIRE for a Forest Health Grant. J, adopt Resolution Number 201-53, authorizing an application to the Director of Industrial Relations, State of California, for a certificate of consent to self-insure workers' compensation liabilities. So I'll go ahead and pull item A, as requested by Rebecca. Do we have any other members of the public? I'm sorry, members of staff or council that would like to pull an item? All right, seeing none, may I please have a motion to approve items B through J?
I move to approve the consent calendar items B through J and remove A.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Schaefer?
I.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
I.
Councilmember Goldstein?
I.
And I vote I. All right. I know we normally do action minutes. Is that correct? So something like the letter wouldn't typically be thrown in there, but is there any problem with us putting that letter in there?
I don't think there's any problem with including the draft letter that the council reviewed that night. The minutes are supposed to capture, and City Clerk Dory, please jump in if I'm misspeaking, but the minutes are legally supposed to capture what happened at that meeting. So I would be happy to put on under staff reports at your next agenda or under consent. Since you've really already approved and sent it, but I could add the final letter under staff reports on your next agenda. So it makes an agenda, and we also could certainly put it under our legislative platform space. I'm just trying to think of where it would best fit on our website in order just if, you know, folks wanted to have access to it on the website, we could certainly get it up on the website. And I'd say that we could include the letter that was blue folder to the council as part of what you reviewed that night of the meeting.
Okay, that all sounds fine with me. Do you have any comments from the council? All right, seems like there's consensus that it's a good idea. Those are good ideas. Thank you.
So we just need a motion for A to
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I move to approve item A with the amendment that we will include the draft letter in the future minutes. Is that?
Great.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have motion in a second. Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
I.
Councilmember Goldstein?
I.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I.
And I vote I. Okay. All right, next we're on old business, and item A, Arcata Police Department's update on police reforms. May we please have a report from the chief?
Yes, good evening, Vice Mayor, city council members, city staff and members of the community. I will be somewhat brief in my comments tonight. I'd like to cede some of my time to two members of our Public Safety Committee, Vice Chair Melissa Lazon and Member Fred Johansson, who will each be reporting out on some of the updates from our two subcommittees, one in regards to civilian oversight and the other one in regards to recommendations on other positions that can be incorporated into the police department as revenues are restored. From the police department in terms of update on reform, as you all saw in the in the staff report, really this is focused in on the last three remaining recommendations from the National Police Foundation on how to strengthen the Arcata Police Department. The one that is completed now is the one where it was recommended that we had increased transparency in the reception and investigation of complaints of unfair or biased policing. And this came about during the National Police Foundation's review of our policies and procedures, when they learned that there were no documented complaints of biased-based policing. And so they really made an effort to encourage us to identify additional access points where community members would feel safe in terms of filing a complaint where they felt like they were discriminated against or where they saw discrimination or perceived discrimination by a member of the organization. And so obviously, that's really important to us as a police department. A, we want people to be safe when they're communicating with members of the department. But more importantly, we need to know when somebody wants to allege that there was unfair treatment or discrimination on the part of anyone who works for our organization. And so we work closely with the city manager's office to create an opportunity where people could bypass the police department altogether and file the complaint directly with city manager Deemer's office. That is in addition to really the traditional access points that are out there, which is we have a complaint form that people can come into the station and complete or take with them and complete and return. That that form is also available on our website. But we have found, similar to agencies throughout the country, where some community members feel more comfortable and safer to report misconduct or discrimination discriminatory practices to an office outside of the police department. So that was made available and is now available for community members to utilize as an access point. The second access point that we developed was to file a complaint electronically directly to our front office here at the police department via email. It's a very efficient process, and that email would be directed immediately to myself as the chief to evaluate and to assign out for review and investigation. So the other piece that we believe as an organization is really important is that we really feel like we're better positioned as an organization to recognize and receive complaints that are that serious in nature. And when you look at the overall National Police Foundation report, the 36 recommendations under 20 lessons learned, the fact that really, for all intents and purposes, all 36 recommendations are either fully implemented or are far along in the process to where implementation will be in the next several months. We are, we're much stronger. We're better positioned when you look at training, operational leadership, planning and supervision, those four core areas that the MPF said we needed to make a commitment to strengthen. Well, that includes in our ability to recognize serious complaints and to have as many access points as we possibly can to make community members feel safe so that we can receive that complaint and have the trust and confidence in our community members that we're going to do the right thing, investigate it, and come up with some findings. So the other final two recommendations where we've made a lot of progress on is to gauge community sentiment through a survey. Well, we've got two surveys that are getting ready to start. One of them is being authored by the Public Safety Committee. The second one is going to be authored by an HSU student who's going to be an intern for the police department in the fall semester. So we'll have two different surveys with two different scopes of work tracking at the same time, which will give us great insight on how we're doing from our community members' perspective in terms of delivering police services. That's also a recommendation of the foundation. And then finally, the last remaining recommendation is to identify all investigative positions and what their job descriptions are. And our Investigations Commander, Lieutenant Todd Docweiler, is very far along in writing the standard operating procedure manual, which will contain, amongst other things, not only identifying the positions within our investigations division, but what are the responsibilities for each one of those. So what I'd like to do is transition to Melissa and Fred, and then I'll wrap up to see if if any of you have any questions. So with that, I'd like to introduce Melissa Lazon and Fred Johansson, who will review with you an update on the civilian oversight subcommittee and the budget subcommittee of the Public Safety Committee. And we'll start with Melissa Lazon. Thank you.
Hi there. This is, I'm Melissa. I can't make my video work, but that's okay. I just wanted to say hello and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. And I am here to let you guys know what's going on with our civilian oversight subcommittee. We are at a spot where we need to talk to the city lawyer. So before we go any further from here, we need to speak with her about any roadblocks or unforeseen limitations that being a general law city may impose on us. So we're looking forward to talking to her. We'll have a nice list of questions. For right now, our baseline proposal is that our civilian oversight, the general task, will be handled by the Public Safety Committee. Those tasks will be yearly policy review as well as policy proposals, monitoring and reporting, improvement effectiveness of our department, improve service outcomes by developing solutions. Investigations will, so that will be those general work of the civilian oversight. The more specific reason we were created was to work with the department on investigations. So right now, we are considering having a panel of five Public Safety Committee members as the investigation panel, review panel. This will give us some space for some, any unforeseen issues such as, you know, we have a member who needs to recuse themselves or if they're simply just not available, or if we have empty seats on the committee. The next most important piece that we'll need to be looking at is training. All of the members of the committee will be trained at the same level or as close as possible. We're currently looking at a hybrid approach to this training, starting with department-specific training. So we would want to understand processes and procedures as well as any department staff that's involved in the investigations. We're thinking a good starting point will be that complaint process and some scenario training. You know, you can't oversee something if you don't understand its inner workings. From there, we're also looking at the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. They have webinars as well as an annual conference. The webinars are $20 for non-members and $15 for members, so there may be a small request for a small budget for training. And then finally, we're going to really need to, with this training and with our understanding of the department, we'd like to build some formal processes and procedures around the oversight, what our duties will be, you know, how we want to manage investigations, what will be, what investigations will we be a part of. We are looking at, if we're starting to get into any use of force investigations, which hopefully will come later after we've had an opportunity to really engage in the process, the complaint process, and understand and get more training. Once we get to that point, the idea is that our five panel, our five-member panel would have the investigation, the investigation would happen within APD. That investigation would be brought to our five-minute, five-member panel. We would have unfettered access to all evidence and and, I'm sorry, I lost my spot. So anyway, we'll have unfettered access to the evidence, and we will have, hopefully, legal counsel that we can ask questions to. And then what we will do is then we will bring our recommendations publicly to the city council and the department administration, and then that final decision on any consequences after that will rest with the chief. Questions?
Do we have any questions from the council? Doesn't look like we have any questions so far.
Melissa, thank you. That is a lot of information. It sounds like before I transition over to Fred, it sounds like Nancy has some comments.
I just simply wanted to let the council know that the representative from the subcommittee, the civilian oversight subcommittee, has reached out to me to set up a meeting. So I am hoping to do that soon. I'm going to forward to working with the subcommittee as they flesh out. I want to hear more details and work with them as they flesh out the civilian oversight program. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nancy. We're looking forward to talking to you as well.
Thank you, Melissa, for yours and the entire committee's commitment to this very important work. And now Fred Johansson joins us, and Fred took, similar to Melissa, took a leadership role on the budget subcommittee, which was really a direction from the council to, for the PSC to identify other positions that may be incorporated into the organization other than sworn officers that might be able to provide services where a sworn officer is just not needed based on the information we received. So with that, Fred Johansson.
Hi, good evening. We determined through six months of discussion that there are basically two options for, that we felt were where we would like to go. And the first is what's happening right now, and that would be to expand the MIS program, which today is operating four days a week, to a full seven days and possibly seven 24 hours, as far as the best. The other option would be through our department, using staffing that we already have and adding to sworn officers. And that would be to re, I guess, recreate the community response team, which would also take care of other problems that are happening with the homeless and the mentally ill population. One of the, one of the things that I wanted to talk about here just quickly is a little background here. So this has been one of the most exciting times for police reform ever. And in the last six months, I have been absolutely amazed and so impressed with what's happening with our department and what's happening with Arcata. So two years ago, the legislature passed new penal code. And I've got to read this, this first part of the bill. "The highest priority of California law enforcement is safeguarding the life, dignity and liberty of all persons without prejudice to anyone." It's sweeping. It's, it's sweeping. And so. Along with that, they included enhanced training. And this department has jumped into it with both feet. With de-escalation and training and racial bias training, both locally, luckily. But the bill also includes training for. De-escalation and mental health disabilities, behavioral health issues. And also mental health and policing, including bias and stigma training. So our officers are going to, that's going to be part of where we're going to go later. So being aware, council of what training is taking place. And that, and we are doing everything that we should be at this point. In the last three years, I think we're, we're up training wise 300% of where we had been before that. So. I can just say, I think there's, there's a lot of other things that are going along with this. MIST, of course, is wonderful, but we also have, we want to, we would like to see a commitment to a long-term MIST operation. And also. We'd like you to be looking at the, the training on a yearly basis to follow up. And all of this is to. Basically help with mental health and social work. In addition to what the department already has and is already does on a. Seven days a week, 24 hour day basis. There are people that are on the streets dealing with our problems. So any questions?
Councilmember Goldstein, have any questions?
Um, I have a couple overall, but I wanted to wait till y'all feel like I didn't want to interrupt. So I don't know if you want me to ask now or wait till you're all done.
Let's go ahead and do questions now.
Okay, cool. Well, I always really appreciate these updates that we get. I appreciate that we regularly get updates. And I always look forward to hearing the work that you all are doing. I really want to thank you all for all the hard work on working for a civilian oversight committee. I think that's going to be really great. I'm also really excited to hear the different alternate ways. That incidents with the police can be reported because I do think sometimes when that trust is broken, it's hard to. Then turn to the people that broke your trust to solve the problem. And so I'm excited to see these other forms of accountability that are growing in our community. I think it's really awesome. I think my only question really was just that it sounds like y'all have been working really hard and are wrapping up the goals that you set. So I'm kind of just wondering what's next. What, what do you see as your, your vision for, for reform work going forward? Um, I do know, Chief, I've heard you talk about as one of the many. Models that you are working from eight to abolish. And I'm wondering if there is moves to. I mean, it sounds like there are in some ways in terms of finding more opportunities for mental health and social work professionals, but. In terms of downsizing the actual amount of officers we have in Arcata and. Moving to alternate models as well to have other professions involved in some of this, these like crisis interventions.
That's a great question, ma'am. And you know, this is an ongoing process for us. And as you look not only here in Arcata. But you look throughout the state and the country, there are cities just like Arcata that are making massive changes. In terms of how the traditional police model is providing services. You know, the city manager reminds me all the time that, you know, it is a process and. As much as we have made so much change, there is so much more work to do. But I have to be mindful as well of what your goals are and what your direction is as our elected leaders. Here in the city. And I have, you know, tremendous peers as department directors that have, you know, equally as important priorities. For them. And so, you know, as committed as we are to this change, I also understand that we're only one voice. Your, 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 your voice is invaluable in this process as, as a city council. And then, you know, our Public Safety Committee, you know, one of the things again that I talked with the city manager and she reminds me of as well. Is that while we work together with the Public Safety Committee. It's important that they have an independent voice as well, because as these reform recommendations come to you. They really need to be from the Public Safety Committee and not tainted by what, by what the Police Department wants. And then ultimately you'll get the information that you need in order to, you know. Direct myself in terms of, you know, some of the things that you would like to see in addition to some of the changes we either have. You know, ready to go or that we've already completed. So. To really answer your bottom line question about, you know, what's next. I'm glad you brought up Campaign Zero, Eight Can't Wait, and Eight to Abolish. Very, you know, clear directives by advocacy groups who are demanding change. That is with our Public Safety Committee. It is one of several goals that they have. That, that is a, you know, it's a heavy lift for our community volunteers who have stepped up and I, and I really appreciate. The council tonight giving not only myself an opportunity to present before you, but two of our committed community members. Who are really dedicated to seeing this change, you know, come through. So I think collaboratively, collectively. With this opportunity to come before you and provide updates on reforms. It's also a chance for us to kind of hear from you exactly what you just asked. So we can sort of build this, this new and reimagine policing. With your vision in mind as well. So we do have a very, a very hearty agenda for 2021. Several goals in place, including what, what kinds of things does the Public Safety Committee want to recommend to all of you regarding? Campaign Zero. And similar to the reporting out tonight on civilian oversight and other social service positions. This is one step toward more formal recommendations to you sometime, you know, this year, but it is a lot of work. But we have the right people who are committed to doing the job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And definitely, yes, thank you so much, Fred and Melissa and the rest of the committee for. The hard work that you put in as community members. It's really appreciated. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Funny that you said this earlier, Councilmember Goldstein, you kind of stole my question. So you got to talk before me this time. So but just thank you to the chief and to our two committee members for being here tonight. I really appreciate, I mean, just the thorough work that you guys are doing. I guess just one clarifying question that I do have is, so for this investigation oversight panel. That would be then made up entirely of members from the Public Safety Committee?
That's the idea. And the reasoning behind it is the staggered term limits that we have. Originally, we had talked about bringing in a larger group of community members, and I still think that that could be a possibility down the road. But right now with the way that our committee is, is made up is with those staggered terms. It means that we can do a real investment in training without losing that institutional memory when someone leaves.
Great.
So that was the thought behind that.
Yeah, that, that sounds all great. And especially, I mean, just the, the multi-tiered kind of then coming before the council, coming before the chief, coming before this committee. Just, you know, my, my only one thing I would be wary about is just hoping that, you know, there is a diverse range of people that are on this public safety committee and that. Those that might not necessarily always have the chance to participate in civic action would still be, you know, heard by this committee, but I, you know, seeing the, the multiple levels. Of people that it would go before. I do have faith that that would be, you know, there would be integrity in that process and it wouldn't. You know, just be the, the same people, you know, seeing the same, I don't exactly know how to put it into words without. I don't know, sounding, I don't know, but just, just, you know, making sure that it is a diverse committee and that there are, you know, multiple viewpoints being seen within that committee. And then also, you know, the fact that it does go before the council and before the chief, I think would ensure that as well, but.
And that's one of the things that we would look to the City Council for is to provide us with that diversity. So when we have people in the community who step up to be on our committee. It would be great if you guys could help us fill our seats with those diverse voices.
And I believe that, is there an open spot on the Public Safety Committee right now as well? Okay, so if anybody's listening. Yeah, there's an open spot on that committee too. Okay, great. Thank you guys so much, really. A lot of excellent information. So thank you guys for all the work you do.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
No questions, but thank you all for the reports. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks very much for the committee's work. Really appreciate it. Do we have any other, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
All right. Thank you, Chief Ahern. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much for your work.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Item B, Adoption of Vacation Rental Fee Resolution Number 201-51. May I please have the staff report?
Yeah, good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight is a proposal to adopt Resolution 201-51. Which would amend the city's fee resolution to include and update some fees associated with the short stay and vacation rental ordinance that you recently adopted. So we're asking that you receive this brief staff report, take any public comment and adopt that resolution implementing these changes. In short, what we're doing with this update is to add a lower fee to add people to the waitlist. So right now it's $50 to apply for a permit. It's $20 to renew. We'd be adding a $20 fee to waitlist if people fell into that category instead of requiring them to pay the full $50 for a first application. And then as we've been implementing the program, we found that there are certain applications for, you know, various reasons that take an excessive amount of time. And to ensure that this program is paying its own way, that it's not being subsidized by the general fund. We've added an hourly fee for permits that for whatever reason require more than an hour's worth of time to review. This hearing was noticed, is a public hearing that was noticed. And part of that notice required us to tell the public how we came up with the fees. I've included that as Table One. I'm not going to go over it in detail now, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So I'd suggest you open the public comment, open the hearing for public comment and adopt Resolution 201-51. Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Just a quick question. So if you pay that $20 waitlist fee and then you are later allowed to get a permit, does that $20 count towards the later $50? Or is it $50 for the permit in addition to $20 for being waitlisted?
That's a really good question. It's $50 for your application. And so this, this $20 is to get you on the list. We have an other, and all we do is literally take your name, put it on a list in order so that when we come back around. If there are fewer than 100 under the cap, we would then go through that list and ask people if they're still interested. And so then they'd be required to come in and pay an application fee for a full application. So it would be $20 to waitlist, $50 for application.
And if you decide to remove yourself from the waitlist, that is non-refundable, I assume, because you, it is administrative cost, right? Of, you know, being put on a list and being added. Yeah. Okay.
That's a, that's absolutely accurate.
Councilmember Goldstein?
I was just gonna say, third time tonight, Sarah. You took my question.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
As a reminder, if you're logged on to the Zoom, click on Raise Your Hand on the right hand side of your screen. And if you've called in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Is there any public comment for this item? Seeing no public comment.
Thank you. Right. Do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt, oh, sorry. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 201-51, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the master fee schedule.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a seconds. Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we are on to new business. Item A, appoint one new member to the Economic Development Committee for a term expiring either September 30th, 2022, or 2024. Do we have a council member that would like to make a motion? I guess I'll just say, I mean, I'm fine with doing the term of 2024.
Yeah, that was going to be my only question if there was a preference of our applicant. I guess we didn't ask about that before. I move that we appoint Linda Chesbu to the Economic Development Committee for a term ending September 30th, 2024.
I second.
All right. Motion and seconds. Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Next, we have Item B, receive a presentation from Ann Lindsay, President of Life Care Humboldt Directors. On Life Care Humboldt's proposed senior life plan community.
All right, all right, all right, all right. Ann, you seem to be coming in twice. I think I'm going to, what I'm going to try to do is move, I don't. You maybe can't hear me. I'm going to try to move one of you back. But I don't know if I'm going to get quite one. Are you on two different devices, Ann?
No, I'm not.
All right, let's try again.
All right, all right, all right, great, great, great.
All right, hopefully I'm not going to lose you, but I'm going to remove one of you. Oh, it makes me so nervous because it says you won't be able to rejoin the webinar. But otherwise we can't hear you. Okay, wish me luck. All I hope is that you're still with us. All right.
That's better.
There we go.
I'm Dr. Ann Lindsay. I was head of family practice with my husband Alan Glasser off in Arcata for 28 years. And I was Humboldt County Public Health Officer. And boy, am I glad I'm not health officer now. But I am president of a new exciting nonprofit, Life Care Humboldt, and I want to. Have a short PowerPoint, so I got to share my screen. And. Talk through it. Okay. Life Care Humboldt is, we're proposing a resident-led aging-in-place community in Humboldt County. And the idea is to keep people close to friends and family as we age. And their secure accessible homes and an environmentally responsible setting. And we plan to provide a continuum of services to address people's needs over time. And the whole focus is to support independence at the same time as promoting socialization, personal growth, community involvement. And intellectual stimulation. And the nice thing about making senior housing, it will open up housing stock. For other and provide local jobs at all levels. So we can, all the study we've done so far is that we concluded we can build and support a nonprofit. Inclusive life plan community here in Humboldt County. And we did initially a feasibility study in August 2019 and we've repeated that recently. And we can potentially support up, up to 150 independent living units. And that would be cottages and multifamily housing. 36 assisted living places and 24 memory care places. And we're planning actually a unique kind of memory care. It's called a small house. So it's a non-institutional setting. It's a 12 bedroom house and every resident has their own living room, bedroom and bathroom. And there's communal food, cooking and living room and access to the outdoors. And really it's a social investment we need to make. We've got great leadership. So. We've got great leadership. So I'm not going to read out everybody's name, but you might, a few you might know. For example, Kirk Gerard was Director of Planning for the county for a number of years, and it has helped our planning efforts immensely, having him on board. And some other names you may know. We recently were joined by Joyce Hayes, who was the Director of the Humboldt Senior Resource Center for years, and has, knows a lot about senior housing and developing programs. And we have a great group of community volunteers working on fundraising. And we specifically have a healthcare planning committee just to make sure that the healthcare needs of our residents are adequately taken care of. We are really excited about developing our own life plan community, and they used to be called Continuing Care Retirement Communities. But us baby boomers don't like to be called retired anymore. We're just doing something different. So, but we really want to create something that reflects Humboldt County history and needs. And we have a design survey on our website, and we've gotten input from over 300 people. And we're including their input in the design of the community. We looked at 15 sites from Scotia to McKinleyville and ranked them all, you know, on 30 criteria. And the two that came out on top, the McKinleyville Town Center and the parcel in Arcata known as Creekside Homes. And that property has a lot, a lot has been done to it. The annexation has been approved by LAFCO. The environmental impact report has been done. And the city has pre-zoned the area, the property, that, and agreed with the property owner about fees, mitigations, and infrastructure improvement. So we're now negotiating with the landowner about putting our project there. And I understand it's, the project we envision is somewhat different than the Creekside Homes, primarily in the unit mix. And, but once we have a design, we will follow up with Arcata Community Development. And, but I do think that Life Care Humboldt will be an asset to whichever community we, where we decide to locate. So here's our mission. We're really all about wellness and community engagement and adults thriving. And you both can have your own privacy, but also really have a sense of community. And we're really going to foster an environment of learning, culture, fun, and wellness, and be resident-led. I've visited a life plan community in, first one in 1973, and then I went back and visited two years later, two years ago. And I met an 85-year-old woman there who was a master weaver. And she had set up a weaving studio with 40 looms. And some people were learning to weave for the first time in their senior years, and others, there were others who were weavers. And it just really, that's the kind of activity that we want to have people generate. We want to assure the high quality of healthcare along a continuum of services and make it affordable and secure. And really just get engaged with the community and have a sustainable environment. So the idea is you stay connected with family and friends, but you don't have to worry about maintaining your house or hiring help when needed. And I have, my husband and I, it's been our mantra every time the toilet breaks or something goes wrong with the electrical is, okay, if we're in Life Care Humboldt, we could call maintenance. It would be a lot easier. And the idea is, once you enter into the community, maybe in an independent living, you don't have to move out of the community again if you, you or your partner need more care. It's all right there. And currently, a lot of seniors are moving to Medford or Santa Rosa for the, and leaving our community behind and taking all their connections and losing those. And it's really been sad for us to have, to lose friends that way. And a lot of people I talk to kind of don't have much of a plan, but they think they'll be able to hire a caregiver to move in with them. And this is, a lot of times can be difficult and expensive. And it's hard to find somebody with the right skills and, you know, and still then probably pretty lone, can be pretty lonely, even if you have the right care. So there is a big need for this kind of housing in Humboldt. The senior population is growing over the next 25 to 30 years. And seniors are concerned about their lack of support in Humboldt as they age. Eight out of 10 locals age 75 or more are homeowners with a median homeownership of $347,000. And that could support a life plan community entry fee. And the Humboldt County Housing Plan has identified accommodating the growing part population of elders as a number-one housing challenge facing the county in coming years. And we are thrilled that we are addressing that challenge. So we have a wonderful website. You can see who supports us and sign up for updates with our newsletter. Complete the design survey, even if you guys are pretty young. But if you want to have the right kind of community, and when you get old enough and don't want to leave Humboldt County, you can incorporate your design ideas now. And tell your friends and volunteer or donate. And I thank you for being able to bring this to you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm gonna stop my share because that's the end of my show.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the council, starting with Councilmember Goldstein?
I don't think I have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you. This is really needed and hum, it's definitely an area we have lacking. As you said, some, we might be on the younger side, but it's definitely something, even being in my twenties, I'm already thinking about that. I love Humboldt. I don't want to ever have to leave, but it is an area that we're lacking. Great. So I'm really excited about this project, and I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Schaefer?
No questions at this time. Thank you so much. And again, I mean, yeah, this is something that our community really needs. I know people, you know, around here, my parents' age are always looking to downsize. And especially that, that point about, you know, that the housing stock that exists too, as people sell their homes or rent their homes and move into this more, you know, joint, joint care kind of system could be really beneficial to our community. So yeah, thank you so much. And great. Sounds, sounds all great. Thank you.
Councilmember Atkinson.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for sharing this exciting project with us.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Ann. Really appreciate the presentation.
All right, you'll be hearing from me as time goes on, I hope. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Agenda Item C, receive a presentation on SB 1383, Short-Lived Climate Pollutants: Organic Waste Reductions and Take Action As Appropriate. And please have the staff report from Environmental Programs Manager Emily Benby.
Sure. Good evening, council members and members of the public. Joining me here tonight are Jill Duffy and Linda Wise. Jill Duffy is with HWMA, and Linda Wise is the General Manager for Recology. So Linda is going to assist with part of the presentation, and both Jill and Linda are here to answer any questions you might have. So I'm gonna try to share my screen really quickly. This is the first time I've made use of the note function. And my question is, are you right now seeing the notes version of my slideshow or the non-notes version of my slideshow?
The non-notes version to me.
Okay, perfect. Technical, technical questions. So SB 1383 is the greatest waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last 30 years. It's quite large, and my hope in my, in the presentation tonight is giving a really solid overview, without delving too far into the details, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that come up. So in, in the briefest nutshell, SB 1383 requires the state to reduce organic waste by, organic waste disposal by 70%, 75% by 2025. It also requires the state to increase edible food recovery by 20% in 2025. The way that we, in the, in the solid waste land, if you will, have been looking at SB 1383 are that there's six distinct panels or categories of SB 1383. One is that jurisdictions provide organics collection services to all residents and businesses. Jurisdictions must establish edible food recovery program, conduct education and outreach to the community, procure recyclable and recovered organic, organic products, secure access to recycling and edible food recovery, and then monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. And so there are, there's a lot to digest in each one of those six different categories. Some key implementation dates. So we are in 2021. By January 1st of 2022, the regulations officially take effect and state enforcement begins. So that's, that's the key milestone that we're really honing in on right now. Looking down the line, 2024 requires that local jurisdictions take enforcement in our, in our jurisdictions. And that is with the goal of the 2025 reduction target being met. So organic waste collection services are part of SB 1383. The good news is Arcata already has universal curbside collection for solid waste and recycling with an optional green waste curbside collection opt-in. And so going forward, the requirement will be that Arcata provides curbside collection of organics. The regulations lay out a few different container systems that jurisdictions are allowed to rely on based on the type of processing facility that they have for Arcata that will look like a three-container system based on the processing of the recycling, organic waste, and municipal solid waste in three separate waste streams. Edible food recovery program. So the first step in the food recovery program is looking at the existing capacity locally and then expanding to, to bridge that capacity gap if there's a need. Following that, there's monitoring and enforcement to ensure that generators, they're considered Tier 1 and Tier 2 generators, are actually donating so that food is being recovered and targets are being met. Education and outreach is quite broad, and it requires that the jurisdiction provide education and outreach to all the relevant generators in the jurisdiction. There's also a target that CalRecycle sets for jurisdictions to hit a minimum procurement target. And so jurisdictions will be required to procure a specified amount of recycled and recovered organic products. And so there's a bit of a range between what those products can be. For example, we can be considering post-consumer recycled paper, or we could be looking at biogas, for example, just two, two very different types of organic products that would qualify for the procurement. Infrastructure requirements. So this is a big one. And this requires that jurisdictions evaluate current infrastructure and plan for new infrastructure for edible food recovery, or I'm sorry, for both edible food recovery and organics recycling capacity requirements that need to be met. Inspection and enforcement requirements. So the first milestone to hit with this is that jurisdictions are required to adopt an ordinance that would essentially mandate SB 1383 locally. That ordinance in some ways might not take effect until there's actually infrastructure on the ground that can handle organics, for example. But that ordinance still needs to be in place prior to January 1st, 2022. Compliance monitoring and education ranges from 2022 to 2024, with that real enforcement date starting in 2024. So some key challenges. I know that was, like I said, there's a lot, a lot to digest in those different, those six different categories. And so I wanted to pull out some of the key challenges that, that we're considering with regard to 1383. Certainly not, not a comprehensive list. But the first will be to adopt that ordinance before January 1st of 2022, completing the capacity analysis for organics recycling as well as food rescue. And that will be done in partnership. The county is technically the lead for the capacity analysis, and the county will receive input from all the different jurisdictions within the county. Once we understand what the capacity analysis looks like, we're responsible to develop plans to meet the capacity needs for organics recycling as well as food rescue should that, should we have a gap in capacity. We'll also need to amend our franchise agreement to include provisions that help us meet the needs of SB 1383. And that will include rate adjustments to cover the additional expenses we expect to incur. So the compliance process. CalRecycle is still developing the formal compliance process. But what we, what we know thus far is that if jurisdictions are able to demonstrate extenuating circumstances as well as substantial efforts, CalRecycle has the ability to, to provide the entity or place the entity on a corrective action plan, giving jurisdictions up to three years to come into compliance. So an example of substantial effort would be conducting an organics capacity, organics recycling capacity analysis, having a gap needing to install infrastructure, i.e. composting facility, planning for that, realizing that that is going to take longer than a year, let's say, to develop. And so having a schedule for when that will be developed, that would be an example of a reason for CalRecycle to, to place us on a compliance action plan. And so I wanted to step back from SB 1383 just for a moment. I know I wanted to, to provide Linda with an opportunity to give a brief overview of the franchise agreement for the benefit of everyone, especially the newer council members. I know the franchise agreement is something that I don't think we've delved too much into this calendar year. And it's, it's very linked to SB 1383. So Linda, if you want to take this one?
Thank you, Emily. Hello, I'm Linda Wise, General Manager for the Recologies up in Humboldt County. I thought it'd be good to kind of introduce the concept of franchise agreements and talk about that a little bit because solid waste franchise agreements is a business mechanism that's not instinctual for most people to understand. I mean, I think it comes off a lot, you know, you hear comments where they say that, you know, we've got a monopoly here. So I thought I would talk a little bit about that to give you a background, how we got to where we are. Everything we do, our collection processes are a result of, of the jurisdictions reacting to a law that's been passed where something, where there's a requirement that came down. And it is very expensive, so that make, that puts in for a need to have a, a collection agreement with, a long-term collection agreement with someone like Recology. The California Government Code that's listed on the Slide 66755 declared, I don't know when that was, but it was a very long time ago, that it's within the public's interest to authorize and require local agencies to make adequate provisions for solid waste handling. And it gives definitions of what solid waste is somewhere in, in your ordinances. That results in having a franchise agreements, which is a negotiated contract. It's, we go with staff in the councils and present, you know, what our costs are for providing programs and get a pretty detailed analysis. And typically, as I said before, because it's an expensive, these are expensive capital investments that collection companies make their long-term, their long-term contracts. So it speaks to, you know, the areas and programs that we provide and, you know, how our communication programs and how the rate processes are, we go through every year with you. And the council reviews and, and the staff reviews the rates every year. When we go through that, there are years when we don't have rate, we don't have rate increases. So it's basically, it's a way to ensure that there's a fair process for rate-making for the public for solid waste services. So, and there is a franchise fee that, that is paid to the cities. We do pay to the cities for, for this agreement to be in place. So I can answer more questions about a franchise agreement later on in the presentation, but I thought that's worth stating because I think when 1383 starts to get implemented, you're probably going to hear some questions like this, and this will give you a tool to answer that.
So back to the 1383 process. So, so keying into the enforcement process timeline, as I mentioned, there are ways in which jurisdictions can demonstrate substantial effort. substantial effort. And I wanted to point out that substantial effort does not include failure to provide adequate staff resources, failure to provide sufficient funding, or failure to adopt the ordinance. So, um, those, those won't work for substantial effort, but it, it does feel like CalRecycle is really, um, open to working with jurisdictions who are committed to meeting these targets, uh, as quickly as possible and really do show their good faith effort. So, so I don't include that, that slide as a way of, um, raising alarm, but I do want to draw that distinction between what substantial effort can look like and what substantial effort does not look like. Um, so now I'll, I'll combine the next steps with a little bit of, of discussion on recent steps. So the solid waste local task force is an entity that meets on a quarterly basis. In March, the task force, uh, created an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc committee to develop some recommendations to start to address SB 1383. Uh, city of Arcata is on that ad hoc committee and we've been meeting, um, probably every two weeks, sometimes more frequently to start really delving into ways that we can comply with 1383, areas that we could potentially partner regionally, areas that make sense for individual jurisdictions to tackle on their own. So there's been that work on the staff level. Staff has also been meeting with CalRecycle fairly regularly to, to really clearly understand some of the more detailed elements of, detailed and nuanced elements of the regulations. Um, so we've been, when we've been doing that work, we'll continue to do that work. Um, we're also going to seek to develop that ordinance that needs to be adopted by 20, January 1st, 2022. We will identify staffing needs for regulatory compliance and, um, solid waste oversight. As well as working with the county on completing the organic waste capacity, organic waste recycling capacity analysis and the food rescue capacity analysis. So I, we, we've got some good next steps. I wanted to introduce 1383 in a really broad way. It's really significant legislation that we're working to tackle, and I, I certainly expect that this will continue to come back to council throughout, um, throughout this next year. Uh, with that, I'll open it up to questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Goldstein.
I don't think I have any questions. That was a lot of really great information. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, no further questions. Thank you guys so much. And it's, you know, it's, it's one of those things that it's obvious that, yeah, this is a state bill that a lot of people in our community are especially, you know, excited about and would be supportive of, you know, even if there wasn't a state bill to make us be in compliance with. So, um, a lot of great stuff and thank you guys for your work.
Councilmember Atkins Alzar.
No questions, but I am looking forward to seeing this implemented.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Not seeing any public comment for this item.
All right. Well, again, thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Linda, for making the time to attend the meeting as well. And with that, we will, did you have anything else, Emily?
No.
Okay, cool. Thanks again. With that, our next agenda item, C, receiver presentation on, oh, no, that says, we already did that. Next agenda item. C, receiver presentation or regional climate action plan. May I please have the staff report? So actually, you know, not that it matters, but should this be agenda item D on my agenda, I have two Cs.
I'm says D on my agenda.
Okay, I'm looking at a different sheet then. All right, cool. So this is agenda item D. So whenever, whenever you're ready, David.
David, can you hear us?
Yep, sorry. Um, sorry about that. Uh, good evening, uh, Vice Mayor and council members. Tonight we have a report out on some of the work that we've been doing, uh, with our regional partners. And I believe, uh, Emily, you have a, uh, screen share to do for us. Um, so tonight we're going to be talking about our, uh, regional climate action plan, uh, which is an update. Uh, there we go. Regional climate action planned, uh, which is, uh, an update to, uh, the greenhouse gas inventory for, uh, the city and for the region, as well as a new partnership, uh, expanding, uh, work that's been done in the city of Arcata before, uh, to the county, uh, at large. And so, uh, we've got a little bit of presentation from, uh, staff. Emily and I are gonna, uh, work with, uh, some county staff. Connor McGivern, who's here to talk to us a little bit about high level, where we're at with this effort. Some of the other, uh, boards and councils are also getting, uh, this presentation. And this is really just to touch base and let you know what we've been up to. Uh, the council had previously provided direction to work with the county on this regional plan. Uh, we're not quite at a point where we can release a draft. We're getting close, uh, but we're not quite there. Uh, but we thought it was, uh, good, a good time to, to bring this information back to the council. Uh, let them know what we've been up to and, and, um, where we're headed. So, uh, Emily, I believe you have the first part. Do you want to kick us off?
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Loia. Um, so to provide some additional contacts, context, a climate action plan lays out strategies that help mitigate climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So at its core, that's what we're trying to do, so to speak, with a climate action plan. Um, a number of local jurisdictions have, and tribes have already, um, adopted individual climate-related strategic plans such as climate action plans or greenhouse gas production plans. And in late, uh, in late 2018, each of the jurisdictions, each of the eight jurisdictions in Humboldt County formed a coalition to create a Humboldt County 2030 regional climate action plan. And so, as David mentioned, the purpose of today's report is to really provide a high-level introduction of the Humboldt Regional Climate Action Plan and update city council on, um, cap activities to date as well as upcoming milestones. As I mentioned before, the, the climate action plan's project goal, um, is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout Humboldt County. Um, and that target, the climate action plan adopts a target to reduce greenhouse gas emissions too, which I'll, which we'll get into shortly. To provide a high-level timeline or process, perhaps we should say, um, we started out by launching the regional climate action plan, which included significant stakeholder outreach in all the different jurisdictions. Uh, we developed a greenhouse gas inventory and forecast, and forecast. From that inventory and forecast, we worked to create measures, um, greenhouse gas reduction measures as well as selects, working towards selecting measures and creating the narrative that we build out around those measures. Going forward, we'll look to complete the first draft of the climate action plan. Upon that, we will, um, complete the SEQA analysis of that climate action plan, followed by public hearings and climate action plan adoption at the local level. Um, I will now turn it over to Connor, who will be discussing the countywide inventory.
Thanks for the intro, Emily. Can everyone hear me? Thumbs up. Okay, cool. So yeah, this is the 2015 countywide greenhouse gas inventory. And I'm just gonna walk everyone through some of the major sources of greenhouse gas emissions within the county. The first is transfer, transportation, which accounts for 53% of emissions for the year 2015. And that is primarily, uh, personal vehicle use, but you know, all vehicle use within the county is accounted for there. Then we have stationary combustion as another major source of emissions in the county. That's basically, uh, the use of fuels like natural gas and propane. Uh, and, uh, you know, one of the main contributors to that sector of emissions would be the heating and cooling of homes and commercial buildings. Electricity consumption is also a major source of emissions, and then we have livestock, industrial sources, uh, and then some less significant sources of emissions that you can see there. If you can move on to the next slide, Emily. Thanks. So this is a breakdown of emissions by jurisdiction and nothing super surprising here. Basically, uh, it correlates pretty closely to each jurisdiction's population share. So the, the one thing that I do want to point out here though is that, uh, the county's population share is actually less than 60%. And the reason why its share of emissions is larger than its share of population is because vast majority of livestock operations occur within unincorporated county. And you can see Arcata there is at 12% of, uh, countywide emissions in the year 2015. You can move on to the next slide, Emily. Thanks. Am I, Emily, am I covering the targets? Yeah. Okay, so these are the, the different greenhouse gas targets that the state of California has established over the years. And you can see that they get more and more ambitious. So their 2020 target was to reach 1990 levels of emissions by the year 2020. And now the state is working towards its 2030 target, which is 40% below 1990 levels of emissions. And then 2045, this is a, a recently adopted target to reach statewide carbon neutrality by 2045. And on the next slide, you can see that our, uh, recommended target for the Humboldt County Regional Climate Action Plan is 40% below 1990 levels of emissions by 2030. And that's just basically so we can line up our cap with the precedent that the state has set with its greenhouse gas targets. So that I just covered the emissions inventory and the, some of the state targets and how that has led to this recommended target for Humboldt County. Now I want to briefly just go through some of the categories of actions that are included within the cap. So you can see here some different approaches that we're planning to take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Land use planning is important. It, you know, how the built, the built environment affects transportation, and that's primarily what we're targeting with measures related to land use planning. Low carbon transportation refers to the electrification or the use, encouraging the use of electric vehicles. And also mode shift, basically, uh, making it more feasible for people to use alternative modes of transportation to be a personal vehicle use. And as I move through this, you can sort of see how our target areas are based on the greenhouse gas inventory. So those top two items I mentioned, land use planning and low carbon transportation, those are targeting that big slice of the pie that we saw transportation taking up. And so another really important strategy to reduce emissions is to address stationary combustion. And the way that we're looking at that is to take actions to improve the energy efficiency of buildings and facilities. And then, of course, renewable energy generation is important to reduce electricity emissions related to electricity consumption. And then we're also focusing on waste prevention, reduction in diversion and carbon sequestration, which basically refers to, uh, not just trees, trees and other, uh, you know, it can be trees and, uh, natural and marking lands that basically sequester CO2 from the atmosphere through natural processes. And then on the next slide, we have some. Oh, and this is where David's gonna take it off. David, go right ahead.
Thanks, Connor. Um, so I want to talk a little bit about, uh, the history, Arcata's history of greenhouse gas reduction planning, uh, and how that's led to the cap. But before I jump into this and then talk a little bit about, uh, you know, the SEQA process, I wanted to pause for a moment and just reflect back on the public comment that we had from, uh, Mr. Carr at the beginning of this meeting. Who sort of intimated this, this idea that, you know, climate change is, is this existential crisis, this existential threat that we're dealing with. And, you know, just want to recognize that, uh, what we're talking about doing here is our small piece of the puzzle to, to try and, uh, do something about that. So we start with an inventory. Uh, moving from that inventory, we pick a reduction target. That reduction target has these measures. Um, and as Connor had mentioned, some of them we have more control over. Transportation's the highest sector for greenhouse gas emissions. We don't have a whole lot to say about how, uh, what, what emissions come out of the tailpipes of cars. But we have land use authority, and so we're gonna focus on those, concentrate on programs that will help to encourage, uh, other alternative uses and, uh, shifting away from internal combustion engines. So really the question is, you know, how do we actually use these? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna link in our history and sort of the dry topics associated with the, the California Environmental Quality Act review, the environmental review with how we actually use these. The city of Arcata adopted its first greenhouse gas reduction plan in 2006. It followed largely the same structure of setting an inventory, identifying targets, identifying measures and, um, having a monitoring component. Uh, that was updated and the inventory for that plan was updated in 2010 and 2015. The, the programs that are in, included in there, the measures that are included in that greenhouse gas reduction plan didn't rise to the level of, you know, actual mitigations or, or, uh, programmatic implementation. Uh, there were more recommendations. And so how our greenhouse gas reduction plan was used in the past was as a, uh, citation. It was referred to as people would come forward, uh, with projects, you know, out in the private sector. They would look to our greenhouse gas reduction plan and cite that when they're doing their greenhouse gas, um, uh, analysis for SEQA. Uh, the city in, in making its decisions around, you know, what fleet cars to purchase next, or, you know, how to, uh, you know, how to address, uh, you know, the, the buildings. Uh, it, the heating and cooling requirements for the city, we would look to the greenhouse gas reduction plan as a, uh, you know, as a, uh, guidance for, you know, how we want to accomplish those goals. The big change that this 2018 regional climate action plan will do is to, uh, put some, some, uh, flesh on the bones of that greenhouse gas reduction plan with real specific measures, real specific targets. We want to have, you know, 500 EV charging stations in the community by, you know, 2030, for example. Um, whatever those, those actual specific targets are. And so then as a project is coming forward, they can look to that guidance and say, this is the specific measure that I need to include in my project to make sure that I'm doing my fair share. It's kind of a way of looking at it. Next slide. And so the, uh, SEQA or California Environmental Quality Act, uh, encapses the climate action plans. Uh, basically, SEQA carves out a, uh, process whereby if a jurisdiction goes through climate action planning, uh, meets these targets for identifying an inventory and forecast, uh, identifying the target reductions, they have quantifiable reduction measures, and then they implement and monitor those programs that they can actually get SEQA streamlining. So each individual project won't have to come forward and do its own greenhouse gas analysis. You can rely on the jurisdiction's, uh, uh, SEQA process that it did for its climate action plan for your project. That's, uh, what we would refer to as a qualified climate action plan. And so under qualified climate action plans, projects, either city projects or private projects can tier off that climate action plan and use the SEQA document that the city adopted for the climate action plan for their analysis. Um, and then they would be required to implement the programs that we've identified in our climate action planning process. The city has a non-qualified cap now. Our greenhouse gas reduction plan is listed on the state's websites as a climate action plan. Um, and it does effectively the same thing. Um, as I mentioned, what those distinctions is to the detail associated with the, the, uh, the implementation. And while we wouldn't achieve tiering if we have, if we continue to have a non-qualified climate action plan um, and projects would have to do their own greenhouse gas inventories, we would still have a list of implementable, uh, projects that those new projects could refer to. We could still lay out our aspirations for, uh, making an impact on, uh, climate app, climate adaptation and for climate, um, uh, resilience. We wanted to bring these forward because the original, uh, intent, if you look back at the MOU that the council authorized in 2019, the original intent was that we would get a qualified cap, that we'd be able to provide this SEQA streamlining. We're still working towards that goal as a region. Uh, but as we've learned more and as we've been going through the process, we've realized that many rural jurisdictions in particular, uh, just don't get to the point where they can adopt a qualified cap. It, it doesn't mean that we've missed the target, though, if we don't have a qualified cap. A non-qualified cap is still useful for SEQA analysis. It still lays out the policy direction that the council. A non-qualified cap is still useful for SEQA analysis. It still lays out the policy direction that the council wants the city to go. And it's really just a SEQA streamlining piece that we, that we miss out on if we don't get a qualified cap. So, next slide. So I just wanted to walk through in, in closing the process in a little bit more detail. Emily had pointed out some of the, the high level, you know, milestones. On this slide, you know, we've done measure selection, we've done the spreadsheets and the modeling. We're participating in an iterative process. Staff of the different jurisdictions are meeting monthly. And we've been doing so for, you know, year and a half now. We've been, we've completed the target selection meeting and we're reviewing the, the pre, the admin draft. And so trying to get that draft together so that we could have a public review of the draft. So we're kind of getting towards the right-hand edge of this slide here where we'll be able to finally publish the draft climate action plan and start to engage folks who haven't participated or folks who want to participate again. Next slide. So, you know, going forward in the next couple of months, we'll be hopefully closing in on those goals. And then, you know, sometime late this year, going through the, the SEQA process. Now, we've been talking with the Humboldt County Association of Governments to, about having them use some, some state fundings that they're, that they're receiving for, for planning work to actually assist the jurisdictions to do this SEQA work. And so the county right now is going to sort of take the, the first lead on adopting the SEQA or going through the SEQA process for the climate action plan. And once they've completed theirs, we'll either be able to tier or else be able to use some of that same material that was developed working with the HCOG and the jurisdictions regionally to ultimately each adopt our climate action plans, local climate action plans. So the benefit of this process will be that countywide, anywhere in the county, you know, developer who's bringing forward a project would understand the climate action plan goals. They'd be similar across all the regions. And, you know, while it's still up to each individual jurisdiction to determine, you know, whether they buy off on a whole or a part of the climate action plan. The idea is that we'll all be speaking the same language and the developers will hear the same, same measures being put forward. And the other great thing, I think, from this regional process is that, you know, we've all come together, the different jurisdictions, to really try and tackle these things collaboratively, these, you know, climate resilience and, and climate adaptation collaboratively and to, you know, bring forward ideas, experiences from each of our own jurisdictions to inform this process. It's a really ambitious program and, you know, we're, we're excited to be working with it. And I'm looking forward to being able to share the, the draft plan with the council and the public soon. I believe that's the end of our presentation. So if there are any questions from council before we turn it over to the public and or, you know, deliberations. We've also got representatives from RCA, Redwood Coast Energy Authority and the team who did the modeling here tonight. If you have any detailed questions about those, those concepts are, are there here to support, support you as well. So thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Schaefer.
I don't think I have any questions at this point, but thank you everybody so much. I mean, this is a really great overview. And I'm really excited about, you know, working with this project and hopefully, you know, getting some countywide stuff going as well, not just within the city, because it's important that we all work together to make this change. So, thank you guys very much.
Councilmember Goldstein.
I don't have any questions. Thank you so much for the work and the presentation. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Atkins Alzar.
I do, I do have a question. I'm not sure if you'll have the answer to it, but I know that, you know, we've had this our greenhouse gas reduction plan in place for a while and, you know, that we refer to that and use that to help us inform the decisions that we make. Do we have any data to show like how, what like, what level of success we have had doing that? So that's, that's my question.
Yeah, Emily, do you want to weigh in on that? I know Karen's got some, some good information on that too, probably.
Sure, absolutely. I see Karen's gesturing. It looks like maybe getting something from the archives. But in short, we do our inventory periodically. So we did the 2006 analysis. And then the 2010 greenhouse gas inventory, as well as the 2015 greenhouse gas inventory helps to serve as essentially a measuring stick for how we're doing versus how we had hoped or what we had planned to do.
Yeah, and I'll add, we can get you some additional background to all of the council, which I think would be helpful. But, you know, we have done some tracking over time, in part because we are part of what's called through the, the Beacon Program through the Institute for Local Governments. And they also track a lot of the city's progress around emissions reductions and sort of sustainability, climate action best practices. So for example, in 2020, we reached our silver level, which was a six percent reduction in overall greenhouse gas reductions. In, back in 2015, we received a civil award for natural gas reductions of eight percent. The agency from the city's perspective, we hit our gold level in 2013 at overall reductions of 12%. And then we can walk through, I'll give you, I will put in all of your boxes or email out, you know, sort of a number of the actual efficiency measures that we've completed over the course of time to bring us, you know, closer to, to net zero, including quite a bit of solar and quite a bit of retrofit of heating and ventilation systems. I will say, and it's not a question to answer tonight, but it is something that I think should maybe be in the mix. One of the things that we found when we did re-inventories over time is that one of the most significant, if not the most significant component of which one is transportation, but really the largest component was what your base electricity was. So even if we had made, you know, a 10 or five or 50% reduction in a certain area, if PG&E's portfolio changed a quarter of 1%, it could just like wipe out all of our, all of our activities and all of our savings. So I'd be interested in having this group look a little bit at the possibility now that we are on community choice aggregation for our electricity as to whether or not that mix and the portfolio of that mix, setting goals for the county. Not, I mean, we opt up as a city, so right now we opt up to 100% renewable electricity for the city of Arcata. We purchased that. But RCA and the community trace aggregation has had goals to get the regular portfolio, not the opt up to 100%, but closer to 100% renewable standard. So whether or not setting some clear countywide goals in that wouldn't help our, meet our cap as well. So, yeah, we'll get you lots of data. We have put loads of work into efficiency and greenhouse gas emission reduction.
I, I would also add that the greenhouse gas production plan identified carbon sequestration as an important part of our greenhouse gas production policy. And we've absolutely included, you know, the Jacobi Creek Forest and the Community Forest in that inventory. And I've been monitoring that over, over the years as well.
Great. Do we have any members of the public that'd like to comment?
We do. Our, our first speaker is Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, everyone.
Two minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Matt Simmons. I'm a member of a, well, first I'm a resident of Arcata. And I'm a member of the new group called the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, or ROKER. And the reason I'm commenting is to advocate strongly in favor of Arcata and the county generally adopting a qualified cap. First, I want to thank David for that, you know, the definition of the difference between a qualified cap and a non-qualified cap. I think it's important that, you know, Arcata shows that it's really committing to these targets and that there will be, you know, mitigation and monitoring to make sure that we hit them. You know, it's, we aren't going to solve the climate crisis by just promising to do this. We're, we're going to have to actually make changes. And adopting a qualified cap is a, it will go a long way to meeting that goal. And I should say that ROKER is developing a scorecard to score local politicians on how, you know, well, they're advocating for changes to help with the climate crisis and other environmental harms. And one of the things that we're going to be scoring everyone on is, you know, how vigorously they advocate for a qualified cap. So, yeah, thank you for letting me speak and I hope you all will advocate for a qualified cap.
Thanks Connor. Next speaker, please.
Next we have Maggie. Go ahead, Maggie.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Matt. Not Connor.
Good evening, folks. Maggie Gaynor from Zero Waste Tumbled. I just wanted to quickly connect the dots between Emily's presentation about SB 1383 and this presentation. This SB 1383 is going to be creating a lot of intensive focused work on the part of the city and local jurisdictions and changing a lot about how we do things in Humboldt County. And it's all driven, the legislation was created because of methane generated in our landfills from food waste and other organics. And so it's just an important point that it is, the two are very much connected. Thanks.
Thank you, Maggie.
Next we have Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Thanks. This is Colin Fisk and I am also speaking tonight on behalf of ROKER. And so I just want to, without repeating, I want to echo Matt's points from earlier and just emphasize that, you know, qualified cap is more than just allowing SEQA tiering. It's, it's what allows that SEQA tiering to be meaningful, that's important, which is, you know, setting that target that's in line with the state and international goals and the requirement to implement, monitor and update. So it's really what gives it force and what gives it teeth really to, to implement. So I really do encourage you to adopt and, and encourage a qualified cap. Thanks.
Thanks, thanks Colin. Any more speakers?
Checking for any additional public comment on this item. No further public comment right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Atkins Alzar.
Nothing more at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Nothing more. Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Nothing to add. Thanks.
You know, should we give some direction to staff on what kind of cap we want? Like if we want to do a qualified cap, is that something we can do?
Can I make a recommendation to that?
Yes.
So I, I think that the objectives, you know, are still to pursue a qualified cap regionally, if it's possible. And I appreciate the speaker's, you know, vote of confidence towards that end goal. The reality may be, you know, at the end of the day, that a qualified cap is not possible. It's one thing to recognize a target. It's one thing to identify your inventory. It's a complete other thing to actually be able to implement. And it puts us in an awkward position if, for example, you know, in order to meet those objectives, the, the implementation is impossible for the jurisdiction to, to meet it. So we're, we're having that discussion, you know, with the, the practitioners at this point to try and bring forward something that does make sense. But if, if in order to meet our climate goals, we have to put an EV in every driveway, I just have significant doubts that we're going to be able to do that in the next 10 years. If, if to meet those climate goals, we have to have such extreme transformation of the built environment, the existing built environment. I mean, I think that, you know, it, it may be wise to, you know, go all electric and that starts setting us up for the future environment, but to, to, you know, completely convert the existing environment in order to make a qualified cap. We're sort of setting ourselves up for failure. And if we, if we put forward a project description that has these lofty targets that there's no way we can show that we can actually make them, we're going to have problems adopting a SEQA document that in fact, you know, is, is supportable, is, is defendable. And so I, it's not as simple to just say, well, let's do a qualified cap, you know, or maybe let's just go for an unqualified cap. It's, it's not a simple on-off decision and it's not purely our, our, you know, our will to make it so. So I think that, you know, what I would recommend is instead of, you know, putting down a preference right now, I mean, I think the preference is a qualified cap and we'll continue to work towards that. But instead of saying, you know, this is our direction, go get a qualified cap at this point, let us work as a regional group, working group to try and improve on, you know, our models to continue to think closely about the, the implementation measures and do a little bit more research. And we will bring back, you know, the absolute best climate action plan we can that we feel like is supportable. And at the end of the day, I mean, our, our 2006 non-qualified 2006 greenhouse gas reduction plan has been very effective at directing mitigation that's been incorporated into projects that are approved by the city of Arcata and has an in fact, on the ground impact on greenhouse gas reductions. So, you know, I hope that you could put a pin in that discussion until we come back with the draft climate action plan.
Hey, I'd like to recognize Colin Fisk as an expert and give him a little more time to talk, just to see if he has a response to our staff's, our staff's recommendation.
Thanks Brett. I, I guess what, I guess what I would say, and I appreciate what Director Loy is saying as far as, you know, the significant challenges that this that presents us to meet the goals that are, you know, that are laid out under the state greenhouse gas reduction targets. Specifically, we're thinking about 40% reduction by 2030 under SB 32. That is challenging, but really when you look at the science, that's kind of the, the least that we need to do. And so I, I think that we need to, I think that we need to align our ambition with what the science tells us is necessary. You know, rather than sort of what the, what the expedencies are or appear to be on the ground right now. So I guess that, that is why I would argue for a qualified cap. Thanks.
Thanks. I'm sure we have things in the city that we set goals for and we just do our best to meet them and sometimes we don't. You know, I don't know. It's, it seems like a, a good goal to pursue. Do you have any other comments from, go ahead, David?
Yeah, we are absolutely trying to continue to pursue a qualified cap. I just want to be clear on that. But at the, but at the end of the day, when we go through the California Environmental Quality Act process, we're now entering a legal realm. And so it's, it's gone beyond ambition. And if we put forward a project description and we say, yeah, we're going to meet these, you know, this is our goal, we're going to meet these. And then we adopt a SEQA document, we expose ourselves legally to challenge. And so I think that, you know, when we get through the drafting of this, this climate action plan, I think that we'll have a much stronger ability to make a recommendation as to whether we try and shoot for that qualified, you know, status or not. We have, you know, this is, you know, this isn't just, you know, us trying to ratchet down the expectations. This is, this is us trying to be realistic. I've been working with our Institute of Local Governments colleagues to try and find examples in rural, rural jurisdictions where they've adopted qualified caps that, you know, are defensible. And I was really hoping, you know, that I'd get a list back of, you know, here, check out these, these five, you know, qualified caps. And instead I got an email back that said, yeah, that's really difficult. Rural jurisdictions find it difficult to, to meet these goals and so on and so forth. And so I think, I want to be clear, the ambition, the, the objective is still qualified cap. I think everyone in the region is still hoping to do that. And, and to at least have some of the jurisdictions be able to, you know, meet that, that SEQA threshold. And I, I totally appreciate what, what Colin said. His, his point is exactly spot on that, you know, what the qualified cap does or what our non-qualified cap does that we currently have. If we can actually implement those through, through project approvals is to not just give SEQA streamlining, but give, you know, some, some actual bodies, some teeth to, to that regulation. So.
Okay. So I'm, I'm guessing this is going to come back to us.
Yeah, this is really just an informational update where we're at.
Cool. What do you project will be the, I don't know, just the way things are going with it? You know, three months, six months? Do you think you might have some more to bring back to the council? Do you think you might have some more to bring back to the council?
We we actually removed the timeline from the presentation. It's it's difficult, it's difficult to say. I mean, I think that we we can certainly commit to coming back in three months and giving another status update. And I know everybody at the county in particular is very anxious to get a, you know, a product out that that the community can can play with and and look at and, you know, look at.
Okay. How about we just we just do that for now? Is if, you know, three months or sooner, if we could just get an update on progress. Cool, thanks so much, David. All right. So that is. Yeah, go ahead.
Public comment is closed?
Yes, public comment is closed. But do we have somebody else that wants to make a comment?
It looks like we have a hand raised.
All right, we we'll go ahead and listen to them.
Go ahead, please, Pat.
Hi, Pat Gargan. I I do appreciate the the points that Director Lawyer Lawyer made with regard to. The challenge that Arcata could face with a qualified cap and. The the legal exposure that the city could have. But at the same time, as Colin Fisk was noting. The targets in SB 32 are really at the, you know, kind of the bottom end of what science is telling us needs to be done. And and there are things that municipalities are doing and can be doing. To begin the process of reducing greenhouse emissions. We're not acting in a vacuum in Arcata. The state of California, as everybody knows, Governor Newsom has issued an executive order. Mandating that new EVs as of year 2035, or I'm sorry, zero emission vehicles. Would be the only new vehicles being sold after the year 2035. And to begin that process, making it more feasible. Cities can begin to to require that EV charging be a part of apartment and commercial parking spaces. So. Yeah, I I do hope that the city is able, along with its partners. To work for a qualified cap and to begin taking the steps that will make that actually take effect. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
We did have one more hand raised.
Okay, let's do it.
Just a moment, I got my timer going weird here.
Go ahead, Colin, use your three. Go ahead.
This is Joanne McGary, also known as McGreta. And I really appreciate learning about this long process that we are doing for this climate action plan. But I just want to say that in the meantime, I think there's a lot of things the city of Arcata can do. And anecdotally, I did walk through town on Earth Day and through the plaza with my earth flag. And witnessed the very noisy gas-powered sitting mower mowing the plaza grass on Earth Day with gasoline. Emissions going into the atmosphere. And I really do think that issues of converting. Gas-powered appliances and equipment of the city to electric or, gosh, even manual, good old manual mower. I don't know. But it was just sort of ironic that this occurred on Earth Day and a big, huge, noisy. Noise pollution is another huge issue, but that the gas-powered lawnmower. So while we're going through this process on the climate action plan. And with it with the region and the other jurisdictions and trying to be qualified and all that. There's thing, everyday things that we really can do, and I just think the city just needs to holistically look at what they're doing. And in addition, I also think that the EV charging stations, what are they being charged with? What type of energy is being used? And why aren't we building solar panels over our parking lots? So that the EV charging units can have solar energy charging them. So thank you for listening, and I hope we get moving faster than we seem to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne.
That that is the rest of our public comment.
All right. All right, with that, we will move on. Uh, next, we have oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you're on the phone line. And you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes. When it's your time for public comment, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on items that are not on the agenda?
We do. Maggie, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Just a quick announcement. About a month ago, Zero Waste Humboldt joined a national group of zero-waste organizations. Plastic pollution organizations and other environmental groups for a national campaign. Entitled reopen with reuse. And we're just, there's a whole, you know, we have materials and and we're all working together to help our businesses. Not just food-serving businesses, but the general public and everybody, and I think in particular restaurants. On how to reopen gradually with safety according to our public health rules. But to do it so that we're back on track with reuse. And if you know of anyone, any businesses that are interested to learn more, would like this kind of coaching, please send them our way to Zero Waste Humboldt. Thanks.
Thanks, Maggie.
Checking for one last time if there's any other attendees that would like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda. No further public comment.
All right, great. Next, we have council and staff reports. Do we have a staff report this evening?
I I just wanted to recognize our equity Arcata Home Away From Home group. They really pivoted during the COVID-19 pandemic. They did potlucks before COVID. And were concerned about not being able to reach out to students. They ended up through the support from Humboldt Area Foundation, Co-Central, and the COOP. Over the course of the school year, still doing four food events where they hired. Local businesses to have pre-prepared meals and then had really fabulous bags of free stuff for students. Averaging about 130, anywhere from 120 to 150 students for each of their distribution. So I just wanted to recognize the work that that group has been doing this year during COVID. And that's it.
Thank you. And council, councilmember Goldstein.
Anything to report, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Nothing to the, nothing to report. Woo, we're almost there.
And councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Um, yeah, just one thing to report back to council on. I'm sure you guys probably remember that we got a packet of letters regarding concerns and from North Town merchants. That was, I think, right before maybe our last meeting, we got that. And so Vice Mayor Watson and myself hosted a Zoom town hall with some of those merchants. We reached out to all of them that that had reached out to us and invited them for, just for an informal discussion, to hear their concerns and try to brainstorm solutions. And we also had City Manager Deemer and Chief Ahern attend that as well so that they could. You know, advise us on on city policy and law. And it went really well, and so I just wanted to let you guys know that we did that.
Great, thank you for that update. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.